Here.
Here.
Yeah, Gressel, please.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval of changes to the order of the agenda. Any additions or corrections? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Over.
Second.
Moved by Lee, second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Approval of meeting minutes from November 4th and November 5th. Did everybody have a chance? Moved by Jake, second by Lee. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay. First item on the agenda tonight, of course, is our public hearing for the 2020 City of Algoma operating budget. I'm going to have our treasurer walk us through the budget for next year, and then at that point, I'll open it up for any questions from anybody that's in attendance. If we don't have any questions, then we'll close the public hearing, so. Amber, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Let's switch this over here. Go ahead. Okay, so this is our 2020 proposed budget. Sorry about that, we got some feedback back here. The department heads worked really hard this year to make sure that we kept our tax levy as low as possible. We actually had a pretty level budget increase for the general fund, slight increase to some of the other enterprise funds. The slide shows where our revenues come from for the general fund. The vast majority of funding for general fund expenditures comes from taxes. This would be property taxes, accommodation taxes, things like that. Charges for service, intergovernmental revenues, fines, forfeitures, license and permits, all make up our revenues for the city. This year, your property taxes are coming, forty percent of the tax bill that you're going to get is the City of Algoma. Thirty-two percent of that bill is the school district, twenty-five percent is the county's levy, and three percent is for Northeast Wisconsin Technical College. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see the mill rates for 2018 and the mill rates for 2019, and the city was able to keep our increase to the property taxes to a 1.58% increase. For the general fund, the expenditures by department are shown here. The debt service payments of the city are mostly for capital projects funding. There are some other miscellaneous loans out there. There was some dredging for the marina that needs to be paid off. There was a financing done to pay back the state for unfunded pension liabilities. That's where all that debt payment goes. The fire department takes about fourteen percent of the budget. General government, which includes the legislative, finance, clerk, and elections, is about twenty-four percent. Parks and Rec is about seven percent. Police is fourteen, and Public Works is about twenty-two percent. And that encompasses patching of the streets, sidewalk repair, plowing, and general maintenance. The CDC, which is the Community Development Committee, uses the accommodations tax, and they have some grant money that is available for people to do events and things like that. And then we do own and operate a cemetery, Evergreen Cemetery, and that's only about one percent of the budget. So overall, the department heads and myself are pleased to present you with a balanced budget for the year. Is there any questions?
Amber?
Jake?
Where is the marina fund, please?
Jake?
Where is the marina fund?
The marina has its own fund, so this year it's $221,000. Sorry, we're trying to do this with me in the back room. It doesn't work so well. What was your question?
Well, on the previous slide where you had it broken up by percentages, the marina wasn't on that pie.
Correct, because it's in its own fund. It is not part of the general fund. So that those pies are only for the general fund departments. So the marina is in its own fund because they charge fees for the service, so they're in a special revenue fund. Eventually, someday, we'd like to move them into an enterprise fund. If they continue on this trend of being able to meet their needs with their service fees, then we can make them an enterprise fund. So when there are capital needs down there, like dock replacement, dredging, we can issue revenue debt rather than general obligation debt.
Got it.
Any other questions?
Anybody in the audience have any questions on the budget? As a comment, like what Amber said, I think all the managers did their best to try to hold this budget to something that is presentable to the community and to the taxpayers. There is a slight increase. It's under two percent. There's just no way we could get away from that. I mean, we have a lot of things that we want to get accomplished in 2020, but again, kudos to our managers and everybody for keeping this budget something that I think is acceptable to the community. If anybody has any questions after they see this information, please contact City Hall, and we can give you a little better explanation. It's kind of hard to do this all by over the cable, but we try to do our best, so. Again, if there are no other questions, I will close the public hearing, and then I will move on to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening under public comment? No one? And then we're going to move on to the consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance, general bills, and credit card payments. Does anybody have any question on any of those? Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Roll call vote, please.
Mary.
Dashlet.
Upstate.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay. Then, as far as claims, do we have any additional claims against the city?
We do not. We will have an updated finance personnel on the one major outstanding one.
Okay, thank you. Conference attendance, there are no requests for anybody to attend any conference attendance? Okay. Now, I'm going to ask the council to bear with me, under committee reports, we have a lengthy agenda tonight. We have a lot of stuff to cover, and I know the people that are watching this at home get a lot of information when we do our reports as what's going on in each committee and what's going on the different boards. I'm asking the council tonight to basically give me the authority to waive the reading of the minutes because of the lengthy agenda, and we will take it up again next month in January. Does anybody have any objection with that? Could someone just make a motion?
Some moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Eugene to basically not do the minutes tonight. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Under old business, then, we're going to go right on to ordinance number 813-2019, an ordinance amending adjusting City of Algoma wastewater utility rates as set out in section 13.085 of the municipal code. This is the second reading, so this would be adoption this evening.
Some moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Eugene. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mary.
Aye.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move right into new business. Under new business, we have a consideration of applications for new operators license. That would be for Mary Bain. Evidently, she's going to work at the Von Steele Winery.
Some moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by John. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consideration of application for a new kennel license for Michelle Kurtman on 824 Navarino Street. Any comments on that, chief? I mean, we did the background, and everything seems to fit.
Sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Move.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then let's move on to item C, ordinance number 820-2020, amending the City of Algoma fee schedule. This is the first reading, so that anybody has any questions, if you've had an opportunity to look at the fee schedule, I'm going to let Jamie just kind of tell us some of the changes in there. Jamie?
Sure. We reviewed this at Finance and Personnel. The only changes we're proposing right now are increases to the cemetery fees based on a contract with Weez Memorials, and then we're also increasing marina fees. And in the marina, it's, for the most part, kind of across the board, a little bit of an increase everywhere.
Any comments from Sarah on the cemetery fees? Matt, on the marina?
No.
Okay. Then this is the first reading, so we'll act on it in the January meeting. Ordinance number 821-2020, amending section 18.111 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Algoma. That's relating to public hearings for rezoning requests. This also is the first reading. This one here, the way, what we're looking to do is change the procedure, that it would basically go to the planning commission.
Right.
And the planning commission then would hold a public hearing instead of having to come to the council. We felt that that was really the place where it comes to the planning commission, so why not do the, let them do the public hearing and then act on it at that point? So, again, that is just the first reading. Then we'll go on to E. I know there was some discussion at the Finance and Personnel about this one. This here is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Miller Roofing Solutions LLC for repairs to the Legion roof. When we had this at Finance and Personnel, Matt, I know there were some questions that came up. Do you have the answer to those questions this evening?
Yes, I do. The first question, I think, that somebody had was, if we enter into a contract with them now and lock in this price, can we get out of it? I did talk to them over at Miller Roofing. They do not have a problem of us getting out of the contract as long as it's for legit reason. The place would burn down, or something would hap, you know, the roof would fall down, something bad would happen. Obviously, they would let us out of the contract at no cost. If we decide come June, no, we're just not going to do this, put the roof on, well, then we're tied to the contract. Does that, I guess, clarify, that makes sense to everybody? And then the second portion for the Legion roof, on that roof, how much of the bill is labor and how much is the actual material? So the total bill for the Legion roof is $13,446. $5,378.40 of that is labor. So it's a, I guess I would say, less than half of it is labor, the other portion of it is for the materials that would be going on there. And they will stand behind the labor for five years on the Legion roof. We would have to buy the material. So you're looking at, it's approximately, they have it on here as a quantity of 4,482 at $3. The breakdown, if you break it down, out of that $3, about $2.25 is the mater, it's about, I shouldn't say that, it's, sorry. Mine aren't loud enough. It, just over $2 of it is the material. The other, say, eighty-some cents is the labor out of that quantities. So, does that, I think, make sense to everybody, or is that out of that quantities? And they'll stand behind it for five years. On the library roof, the total price for the library roof is $12,376. Their rate on that is $4.25. They'll warranty that material and labor for ten years on the flat roof above the library.
Just for those people at home, the reason they won't warranty the material on the Legion is because the base roof that's on there, correct?
That is correct. There's aluminum coating at one time that was put on the Legion roof. Their, the company won't stand behind the product. Miller Roofing says that they will not have a prob, we will not have a problem with it. He feels very confident in it. It's the manufacturer of the product that won't stand behind it. If there would be a defect in a certain area, they have to take pictures to send it back in for the warranty. He said at that time, if they notice that that aluminum roofing is on there, he said they're not going to stand behind it because of that product that's underneath.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
What was the savings in between signing a contract now and waiting until spring?
Three percent, I believe it was.
And that was paying half now, half then?
If we entered into a contract now, we'd pay half down now upon the mayor's signature.
Does that include the library in the?
So the library would be $12,376. We'd put half down on that, which would be $6,188. And for the Legion roof, it would be $13,446 and half down. Actually, it's not half down on the Legion roof. He has a deposit due of $4,437.18.
Is there any advantage or disadvantage, I guess I would ask Amber, into signing up now versus doing it next year? Do we have the money?
The answer was in the affirmative. I don't think they could see your head move.
Any other questions?
I think the next question, too, just with the library, because the library board has looked at this, I believe, and went through it, they're picking up the responsibility for the library. I don't know, because of the library's budget, if they would rather pay more down in 2019, or that would be?
They could pay more in 2019.
So that'd be something that would be, if they would decide to do that, pay more in 2019 so they don't have to carry the burden into the 20 budget.
Yeah, that's entirely up to them, just so that we know when we sign the contract, how much we're sending in, so.
Correct. And then another question, I think that arose maybe after the meeting, is if we can get a discount because we're doing both projects or both through the city. I talked with Miller Roofing about it to try to work something out, and they will not because it's two different products. One product is going on the Legion building, one product, it's a different product that's going on the library roof here. He has to physically go back to his home shop, switch out trailers to come back out here. He said, Matt, I'll be completely honest, there's really no savings for me. I'm going to have to run a crew out here, do a job, bring everybody back, switch out everything, and bring a different trailer out here and a different crew, so. But I did try to see if there would be some savings with doing both of them at the same time, and unfortunately, there's not.
Do both jobs require the 50-degree weather?
Forty-five and rising.
Forty-five and rising.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, ladies, gentlemen? No? Okay. Then I'll accept a motion to authorize myself to enter into contract with Miller Roofing.
Some moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by John. Any other questions or comments? Since it's evolving money, I'll do a roll call vote.
Weez.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on then to item F, Resolution 990-2019 relating to amending the 2019 budget. There is any amendments, any changes that anybody would like to introduce at this time? Since it's been published, keep in mind, we cannot increase it, we can only decrease it.
This is the 2019 budget amendment?
Oh, yeah, oh, excuse me, for the amendment, yeah, for the, yeah. Any questions?
Some moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we're going to get on to Resolution 991-2019 relating to authorizing the 2020 City of Algoma operating budget. This is where you can no longer increase it, but you can decrease it if you feel it's necessary. Like I said before, it's just a slight increase, it's under two percent. I don't know where we decrease it, actually, if, if anybody wanted to, so. Any questions by anybody on the council of the budget? Anybody want to make a motion? Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Eugene. Any other questions or comments? If not, do a roll call vote.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
And Dashlet.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 992-2019, appointing election officials for the 2020-2021 election cycle. Jamie?
Yep, so this is just appointing election workers for the next two-year election cycle. We are bringing on a few new people. They will all be trained up in December. Everybody needs a minimum two hours of training in order to work that next election cycle, so.
Move. Moved by Eugene.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any questions of any of the individuals listed on there? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Resolution 993-2019, authorizing the mayor to enter into an emergency medical service, medical director's agreement with Bay Care Aurora. Moved by, who is that, Jake? Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by John. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Resolution 994-2019, authorizing the mayor to enter into a service agreement with Weez Memorials and Burial Vault Company.
It's memorial.
Wow. Motion by Scott. Second by Lee. Any questions or comments? Not, do a roll call vote, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Weez.
Upstate.
Gressel is not here. Cleveland. Dashlet.
Yes.
Sorry. Mary.
Yeah.
Thank you. Resolution 995-2019 relating to supporting inclusion of Kewanee County's coastal area as part of the National Marine Sanctuary in Wisconsin Midlake Region. As everybody assures, is aware of, that Governor Evers has now jumped on the bandwagon for this. I did receive a letter asking us to pass a resolution supporting this. I did get some more, another email today, asking us to, myself, to sign a letter of support. So what we're wanting to do is, if there's no objection, we'd like to pass a resolution supporting this.
Some moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by John. Any questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Item L and M, I'm going to take together because it both pertains to the new material and construction of the dock, A dock for the Algoma Marina. I'll read them both. Resolution 996-2019, authorizing the purchase of materials for construction of a new A dock for the Algoma Marina, and then discussion on purchase and installation of decking for new A dock in the Algoma Marina. We've already, Finance and Personnel already spoke about the material for the dock itself. Tonight, in front of you, when you came, there were some samples of, somebody wants to just put it up so those people at home can see that. Basically, what it is, it's materials that's made by N E W Plastics of Luxembourg, and this would be the decking that would be going down on the frame. Now, we did authorize to purchase the frame, we did that, we'll do that in the resolution. But the other thing is that the labor and everything for installing this material will be done by the Public Works employees and/or volunteers that are willing to help. So that's saving us quite a bit of money. So I know there were a few people that, when we had talked about this, said they would be more than happy to volunteer to help put the decking on. We have two types of decking. The decking material is the same, it's just a matter of color. One is kind of a gray, and the other is kind of a tan. We're talking a tan material. It is rough, so there was a question about whether or not there would be slippage when it's wet, but per what they're telling us, because the way that the material is made, there should be no slipping. What I'd like from the council is to just give me an idea of what color, because we'd like to get this ordered. If you're in favor of the gray, or if you're in favor of the tan, I'll just take a show of hands. Did everybody have a chance to look at it? Is there any questions about the material?
Did the numbers come in where we expected them to for that? Matt?
Yeah, I'm actually happy with the numbers. I mean, uncomparable to buying deckboards lumber, conventional lumber, I'm happy with the price that we have.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of Matt on the material itself? Hearing none, a show of hands for those that would like the gray.
The reason I like gray is because if you cut the tan part, then you're going to see the gray underneath. Like, say, somebody nicks it, and if that's only a coating on top, it's only like really thin brown. If you look, your base on the inside is gray. Say somebody wrecks part of it, then you're going to see the, you know, the gray sticking through.
Okay.
You would see that on all the cut-ins, too, then.
Yeah, the cut-in, the faces will be covered. You won't see the faces.
Right.
The faces will have dock. Bumpers on them.
You're not, you have this stuff.
Yeah, so the part you're rubbing there, Eugene, you will not see that, it'll have a dock face or a bumper face on it.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do pink.
Which one do you like, man?
That one.
The brown?
Yeah.
Show of hands, who likes the brown? It looks like the brown has it.
Purely anesthetics.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. You know what to order, so we'll move on to the second part of this. The first part, Resolution 996-2019, authorizing the purchase of materials for construction of a new A dock for the Algoma Marina. Motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Kevin. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you. Motion to approve the hire of G. Michael Gillett as a youth club supervisor for the Algoma Parks and Recreation Department. This is a recommendation from your committee, correct, Sarah? I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Motion to approve the hire of Shelley Brown as an EMTIV tech and a probationary member status for the Algoma Fire and Rescue Department.
Move.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Lee. Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Mayor's appointments and comments, a couple of things that I need to talk about tonight. The Algoma Community Band, of course, is having a Christmas concert featuring soloist Liz Malat December 11th at 7:00 PM at the Algoma Performing Arts Center. Please mark your calendars. The other thing is, the city is recruiting for a marina manager. Applications can be picked up at City Hall until January 17th. Arnie Miller is retiring as our marina manager, and we wish him well. I know he wants to spend more time with his grandkids and do a little traveling, so. And he was just to the point where that getting up so early in the morning just wasn't for him anymore, so. You know, special, if you see Arnie, special thank you to him. But to anybody at home watching that's interested, we will accept applications. They can be picked up here at City Hall, and we'll accept them until January 17th. Are there any agenda items for the next meeting? From anyone? Hearing none. I'm going to accept the motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in relating to selecting candidates and conducting interviews for the vacant city administrator's position, deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Land acquisition. Accept the motion?
Some moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by John. Roll call vote, please.
Mary. Dashlet.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Havick.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Okay, managers, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. Chief, you were involved in the first round, Sarah. But Gus, you were not. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay for the first part, the land acquisition. I'm going to talk-